Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Yes. Are here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead. Second. Gee whiz. We're out of saying. Monahan at the first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 18 meeting. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All the non-agenda items.
That one secretly with Naps Land. It got brought to our attention on Friday that our twin home lots have to be fourteen thousand square feet. We didn't know that. My engineer didn't realize that. He only started doing it ordinances and didn't see it. I guess what I'm thinking, if we can get a variance on some lots up there, it would be great. I know we can't do nothing tonight, but other cities are way lower than what Hartford is on the shore stage. Some of them are thirty-five hundred per unit. Sioux Falls has no limits on their sizes. Canton is at, I believe it's thirty-six hundred or seventy-two hundred. We've got our ninety foot that we need for the driveway for the credit. We've got that on the lot, but we don't have the rates per acre. So I'll have some more information get on the agenda for two weeks meeting.
I don't think this he was coming to council, though, isn't this planning and zoning issue?
We don't know planning and zoning.
The variances don't even come to us.
Unless they do sort it. Right, unless there's an issue.
Right. Have you talked to someone on planning?
I talked to Tony yesterday. He said he has no interest in zoning himself, but that's one person.
How big are they right now?
How big are mine? Probably an average of twelve-five. We've got a lot of interest in twin homes, so if we can't go forward on this, I have to revamp. And I got my sore guys without this, isn't anybody's thumbs in mind. I got my sore guys there. So, you know, timing is of the essence, I guess, is my point.
Hey Mitch, what was the, what were the ones down there on south that we had?
South Maine.
South Maine.
They were, remember if they came back later and built theirs and then they divided the lot after that?
Correct.
And the, I remember the structure was slightly shifted to one side, so one lot ended up being like fourteen-five. And the other one was thirteen-nine, something like that. Fourteen's the, fourteen thousand is the standard, if I remember right.
Yep.
There's something to do with that where they got that, where they put that shared party wall that lopsided that lot. Their intent was to split it down the middle and have fourteen and fourteen. And it just got shifted for construction.
So that, was that the first one that we variance or the second one? Did we, we variance both?
The first one didn't get caught, did it?
No, the first one got caught.
The first one didn't get caught. The second one came to the council. And then I think we ultimately approved both.
I think we did, too. I think we did. But those were, so you're twelve-five, so you're...
I have some that are real close to fourteen, over thirteen-two, thirteen-three. But I am sure, I mean, there's no doubt about it. And it is oversight by myself and the engineer.
Yeah, I think the best thing we can do is try to get to talk to, have talked with. Because may have planning and zoning numbers, if you can. Get that, make sure you're on the agenda for planning and zoning meeting.
And that I gotta be on by tomorrow, probably.
I'll leave Teresa a note. She will be back until Monday. And after next planning and zoning meeting, we have an extra, I can look at the calendar here.
Doesn't always follow the city council meeting?
I think July is an extra week in it, so it's the thirtieth, so you'll, you'll be... Oh, the sixteenth, excuse me, yeah.
No, we're meeting on the sixteenth.
We're meeting on the sixth, so the ninth.
Should be on the ninth.
Yeah.
Week from today.
I don't know if she's doing the agenda over the weekend when she gets back. She never talked to me about that, so... I can try to reach out to her.
It's just gotta be, doesn't it have to be close to twenty-four hours in advance? Monday, she put it on Monday morning, it'd be good for Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to contact her Monday or try to contact her Monday or?
I'll have her contact you, yep.
Appreciate you bringing that to our attention and stuff, begging for forgiveness on the back end, like we've had experience in the past.
Well, I mean, it just, I called Teresa to make sure on our ninety foot and she said it's gotta be fourteen thousand feet. Where did this come from? I had never seen it and the engineers have never seen it.
It's definitely an area I recommend that we reevaluate. I don't tell me, I talked to Tony as well. He was not interested, however.
It seems like a lot of green space left when you get done. You take a single dwelling, a single house dwelling, you can put on a seventy-five hundred square foot house. With my, or square foot, I mean, with my covenants, you can build a, the minimum you can build is a sixteen hundred square foot house with a three-car garage. Which leaves you about, I think it was four thousand square feet when I figured it out. My covenants on a twin home is fourteen hundred square foot and a minimum of two car garage. Which leaves you forty-five hundred on each side. You've got twice as much green space left over on that as you do at...
Hey Doc, this, I don't know if you researched or not, but twin homes, don't they skew towards an older demographic?
Older people want less lawn to take care of. A lot of them are interested in the nature way of putting, making the lawn up there. Get the lawn size, you know, they're kind of leaning towards a smaller, I guess. In my mind, that's why you would build a twin home. You don't want to take care of the lawn and have the lawn care and upkeep.
Okay.
Okay.
Technically, I heard, if you don't know our planning and zoning numbers, you might have heard, just check them, Karen, tomorrow in the office and see if you can get... Whole numbers in touch basically.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Doc.
Alright, we got no applications, hearings, resolutions? We'll jump to the Albert.
Sheriff's report.
Alright, this will be my last report to you guys. We had a hundred and seventy-some calls for service, thirty-seven vehicles, traffic offenses. The thing we're probably still concerned about is we had another four, four or five actual car burglaries and then probably another thirteen that were gone through, but nothing mistaken. Technically, it's a car burglary, but nothing stated it to be theft out of a motor vehicle. But we kind of know who did it. We can't really put them here, but they did get caught doing some places other crooks. I don't believe it was our owners or like the kids doing it. Some like nineteen, twenty-year-olds. My reading on Sioux Falls is the crooks and eventually the Hartford, so... Sounds like one had a skateboard that's going down. They stole a couple bikes and, you know, took the bikes and went down the streets and were checking doors and they're riding bikes. Again, Hartford, lock your doors. If you leave your car doors open, you guarantee someone's probably gonna go through them. Go through it. Other than that, retiring, retirement party we're all invited to, the Vietnam Bowl Bar on July 12th, six o'clock in the evening. So whenever karaoke, I guess, is gonna happen. Since I'm retired, we probably have another road project since Phil will be taking my place. Get a little cheaper lawn for us.
We're gonna need it.
But no, I really enjoyed working with this council and working for the citizens of Hartford and, you know, obviously being in the school. And I've had, it's been a very good assignment for me these last couple of years and then being at the school. So I've enjoyed it. But apparently I still like the excitement. I chased somebody through the window yesterday. Started laughing at me. I'm like, why you couldn't stop me when I was year one and apparently you can't stop me in year twenty-nine, so...
My boys really liked meeting you last.
Did they like it? That's it?
When's your last?
It's gonna be that Friday. It is that Friday, yeah. It is that Friday. So that's it. I've been going around telling everybody, you know, who has two thumbs and six days to work. Alright. It was a big window. It was our actual code enforcement, or our code enforcement guy. It is actual egress window, fire code that works otherwise, yeah. With the vent, with the headboard in front of it, so... I'm not gonna tell you the condition of the headboard.
I'll make sure it's been done.
Thank you.
I assume you're headed out, back in, or up that window?
No, I'm in. You're headed in. Surprise. Sometimes you make a commitment at this size and you just gotta keep going.
Or you can't stop, right?
That's, that's kind of what I was saying. Oh, I did, I suppose I can stand up, but... Mickelson, I have been getting a lot of comments on Mickelson. Everything has been positive as far as the stop signs not being there. They do wish we'd take the poles up because they're a little confusing. They, yeah, we've got people stopping and... Obviously, I stopped some and then I knew a game on our time. I'm like, why you stopping? Ain't no stop sign. When did that happen? It was there when I went to work. So it was the day that they took him off, but...
We left him up just in case.
I guess one time one of them got knocked over, so it kind of confused people on whether they needed to stop or not if it was knocked over and...
We're gonna pull him, I just told Justin. Leave him a couple weeks. It gives you a lot of heat from it.
I think we have two items to consider under your...
Under your section.
One of them is consideration of the full stop sign.
I'll talk.
Okay.
Okay. Keep working. Still getting paid. So second and fighter. That, that stop sign, I'd like to see a four-way there just because it's a traffic control issue, getting traffic on the second street. And I always remember in the mornings, the parents giving up on fighter and just letting their kids out on fighter to have them cross second street and then fighter again to get to the school. Because they can't get on, they can only get on, you know, turn off, they come down and they turn off going west again. So they can get into, get into traffic. So I think that would kind of ease up the traffic on there, especially since we put one in on first and fighter. That seems to work out real well. I haven't got any complaints on that. But the second and fighter, I think just what a stop sign is supposed to do, is supposed to control traffic so that people can get into traffic and then help them, you know... Elaborate some of the congestion and backing up traffic and let it flow a little better. And it might stop students, high school students, from taking that route if they're not dropping off their younger siblings. So usually the ones we see dropping off, you know... I actually timed it for a kid one time because I said, it's quicker to go to Western and Thirty-Eight than it is to go on second street. Just regular driving, you know, just regular driving the speed limit. I said, then you add stopping for letting kids off, everything else, that's much longer. So, you know, I think the kids would get tired of, in the mornings, making that travel on that route, which is probably safer. Just my suggestion.
Got month and first redundant?
Yes, with the gravel road going south, if you wanted to keep one stop sign going south, I guess, just for a traffic control? Or just eliminate the stop signs at that intersection? I don't know how much traffic that would get you, so...
I'd recommend just take them on, have them done controlled intersection. Those stop signs got put in before railroad got put in and that used to be the truck route to the elevator. That's why that stop sign just got put in there.
Okay.
Just to control that intersection with the trucks and tractors, something like that.
You can drive around in the mornings, kids dropping school. There's hardly any traffic there. It's, it's all on fighter and second.
I definitely support the fighter and second, too. I actually kind of naturally stop on second heading...
Because you're watching for kids anyway?
Yeah, and there's like the dip in the road, you know, and so I always think, so people get annoyed at me because I'm kind of just...
And I think I see some people kind of looking for that traffic device and I'm trying, looking for a stop sign to stop. So if there's one there, I don't think anybody would complain.
I like the idea of diverting traffic out of that. It's, you know, it was more for a fair amount of time and still it's cool, but it'd be nice if that extra traffic just stayed on highway thirty-eight.
Yeah, we have a lot more options now. We got Mickelson, we got Western and Thirty-Eight. I think Mickelson will probably heat up some of that morning traffic from people coming out from the south on Western.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I moved to have stop signs in the intersection of fighter and second street. East and west on stop signs on second.
Second. Discussion. You're not? Oh. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Chell?
Yes.
Yeah. I will be removed. I make a motion to remove the stop signs on month and first. Second. Discussion.
Do you think we need one on month, Governor?
No, it doesn't catch a lot of traffic. Because there's, anybody that's on month is gonna be turning on the second. You know, I see what you mean about that traffic on the road.
Right, right.
But they're not going to, they're, they're, our first, they're usually going to second street to take a right or a left. And we don't have a stop sign on second, so...
More discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
I'll be around.
Bye, Tyrell. See you later.
I should, I'll try to get a ticket. Super near.
Try to get one on the last day. I picked one this year. I don't know why I stuttered.
Alright, move over to Mitch for the city and area president.
I don't have any action items tonight, but private's been playing well, fixed and searched and mostly grounded, so we can be progress on the day. Nothing else specific that I want to point out. If folks had questions.
What's the, what's, oh, sorry. What's the plan on Mickelson? Do you think they're curbing better and paving?
Uh, yeah, I'd say in the next...
Couple weeks?
They still got some dirt brining there, but in the next couple of weeks, they'll start shaping the bottom, getting it ready. I'd say, you know, this week's short because of the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
That's why I'm after, I want to make sure that Mickelson gets enough before you guys get back.
That's obvious.
Duh!
There might be houses on the north end of town before they... Just circling back to our meeting last week. Those streets were ruined. It's a mess now. I took a photo tonight, that's why. It's, there's a metal tracking station installed. So there's a lot of, lot of debris coming off of that road, especially what they work on Naps Land. That construction traffic has, you know, the quickest route out of there is Part T. So it, there was a contractor that came out of there this morning, but he threw mud probably to about seven-oh-two Part T.
That might have been me.
You gotta bleed blue before pick up now, too?
No, but I pulled in there to get the sample, so I get the water sample. I love kids.
I followed him.
We'll see how far this goes. We'll bring it out, they get the street sweeping done out there and we talked about it at that meeting. With that address and then our tracking station. Also, the next street, storm sewer, I was adding coming along.
It's Colin. We're gonna need a couple of easements along there because we've got some areas that we can't necessarily get to drain into the streets. We're gonna have to stub some storms, so we're out to then catch those areas. So we're ricking on, having to wrap those and chase those down. I'm talking to myself, you know, they're pretty antsy to see. The plan is just taking a little longer to get them down all over this. So that's, that's kind of where we're at as far as design goals. We're chasing that one. One of those from Mr. Algo, so we either chasing that one.
Yeah, sure. So down there behind Sage Garden, when that starts dumping dump, Nate Street into that storm sewer, is that gonna make our problem worse?
I mean, I think people will notice it. You know, whether it's worse or not, I mean, I don't think, the water, same water that always went there is, is getting there, might be getting there a little faster through the storm sewer. But anytime you put a new culvert and, you know, just it raises people's concerns.
Looks like in Teresa's report, she's not having luck with some people up there.
You know, I haven't touched base with her on that, so I didn't have no idea what she's been experiencing.
Yeah, my feedback's that it's just that it's not like she's getting a couple times. Pressure.
Okay, ask for Mitch? Okay, alright, we move to Craig.
Just I have a few things. Met with contractor on Legion here, they're looking at putting in a, kind of ramped and walked into there, so gotta make sure that we can get that put out on the sidewalk and not interfere with anything else. So we'll work with him on that a bit. They're talking about that also like to have another handicap spot. I suggest that the best spot for handicapped be at the block, which I'm gonna see if we can get a fit in there. I think it will. Just because they want, they're trying to get one in the center. Put them in the center of the block just doesn't work very well. Working with them on that. We'll get the stop signs taken care of, the speed limits will be getting up. I think next week we'll have the timeframes in, so we'll get that done. Water, quarter to port was, I filled it out today and sent that in. Ponds, ammonia is way too high to discharge, but we're sitting okay yet, so we'll keep our samples here in about three weeks. You know, once we move the water from two into three, we'll see if that improves. That's all I got. Let's see who's got it for me.
I mentioned handicap parking in the middle of the block, now with this valley, the barricades, that essentially...
I'm gonna try, yeah, I'm gonna try to figure out something on this side. They just would like to have something on that side, so...
Oh, for sure, for sure.
But we're gonna redo some of this curbing out this summer, yet to fall, and try to figure out where we can have maybe three spots up there and try to utilize as much as we can for spots.
That ramp will be on the right way from part of Legion?
It will be, it'll be, you know, it'll be like where the steps are now, just gonna come out and then they're gonna put a handrail in there and everything like that, so...
Have to apply a little barriers, right?
Yeah, they'll have to go through all that. He was just seeing what it's gonna take to do it now, to get some ideas, so... So yeah, they'll have to come and fill paperwork and everything like that.
Do you spray the reeds, Greg, in some of these waterways?
We haven't had a chance to yet. We're gonna work on it.
Tony Randall was telling me, there's, because he was checking for behind this place, there's a spray tribute, I think it's called.
Yeah, there's like...
Doesn't hurt the wa, you know?
Yeah, rodeo is a water-based or one that you can shoot in water and that stuff. Actually, we've got the chemical in, I got it from the elevator.
Okay.
That's a, I gotta hold the Department of Ag and talk to them to make sure we can do it in the streams, that stuff, don't be problems, so I gotta all, everything take care of it.
So you're at...
We've got, yeah.
When you get to some point, you're gonna spray it, huh?
Yep, yep.
Just curious.
And I'm, maybe I'm a frame figure, but what's the construction on Western?
Uh, Colony's gonna be micro-surfacing that.
Oh.
So, that's, and I did contact them yesterday when they put that sign up down here. It is blocked and it's a blind spot now. So they came out, looked at it, they're gonna get that sign, that billboard, whatever. It's, it completely blinds that intersectional to pull up to the stop sign, so... They're gonna be, tentatively, uh... The eighth or ninth, whatever that is.
Yeah, it's July eight.
Yeah, they're gonna give me a call and get it more set date done, so we kind of make sure we don't have to go around with the traffic getting any more congested somewhere, so...
Alright, do you have a couple of price quotes for Jersey barriers?
Yep, so just a price thought ten, just trying to get a deal with them and... Barco knocked it down a little bit to get ten of them from them. And then the shipping, it's gonna be thirty-four, sixty-one, thirty-one for ten. Traffic Solutions for ten of them, it came to, uh, three hundred, three thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and forty cents, so a little over a hundred dollars more. I did find it a little cheaper. I phone rang and rang and rang and got put on hold and they never did answer, so I thought, well, that's kind of, we don't want to deal with somebody like that, so... Barco's, we bought stuff from them before, so if we decide to proceed with them at this time, we're looking at about thirty, right around thirty-five hundred dollars.
Be pretty slick for Jamboree Days and for part of...
Yeah, you know, in a venture, nice even more, you know, but this at least they would block off the downtown area fairly well, you know?
So you would plan on leaving a forum for Farmer's Market?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve quote for Barco, three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, thirty-one cents, ten units of Jersey barriers.
Okay, discussion?
Craig, do you have that money in any fund that you have that's already been budgeted or is that gonna come out in general?
I could probably find it on a online somewhere, whether it's, because we could probably break it up between parks since we'd be using it for Jamboree and then also for streets. We could actually take it out of water and sooner because we could use it for barricades for anything, so we should be able to find a spot to take it out.
You want that motion, Mark?
I don't think you need any barriers. Craig, where's Barco on it?
It is a, kind of like a municipal magazine that we get out. It's a, it's Barco products. I'm not sure they're even out of, we get a catalog from them every couple times a year, spring and fall.
Have they been pretty good?
We haven't had any problems with them as far as getting stuff from that. It's always been pretty decent.
Thinking qualities, is that it, between the ones with Harrisburg and that?
I, I think they're the exact same ones. Because the sizes and everything are exactly the same. I think just they put a different...
Is it thirty-four, sixty-one? Is that with shipping or without shipping?
That was with shipping, the thirty-four.
That includes the ship?
Yep.
That's two dollar?
Yep. So where Traffic Solutions, we'd have to go pick them up, but you'd have another probably a hundred dollars in fuel and labor by the time we're over to them, so...
Alright, more discussion? Paul? Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brennaman? Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you share those traffic counts with us?
Maybe. When my computer went down, I had to get ahold of the order guy to figure out how to get it put back into this one.
Gotcha.
It's in there, but I can't figure out yet how to get it to come out in form that I need it to be. I do know that we're averaging, it was about six thousand, seven thousand on a daily count, you know, that's back and forth.
On Western.
Yeah, and I moved up, I left the one down by Western and I moved the other one up to, on the other side of the coffee cup, so I just want to see what the traffic's gonna be like over the, our, the Fourth of July net. So see how much BP really picks up over that time, so... So the traffic's bad, and if you wanna see it increase, put a yellow vest on and go stand on the side of the road.
Everybody knows that.
It's terrible trying to get those out. I was.
Yeah, I came right by and wondered if you'd.
We know, we know you move quick, we need to check down around here.
It'd be really interesting to see how much that changes though, and.
Yeah.
When Mickelson opens up.
That's why I'm really concentrating right now on that area, just to see, so when Mickelson does open up, we can see how much. I wanna, the next time I move, I'll be actually put them on Mickelson and by down by Fighter and then down here by Western. So we can see how much that traffic actually goes.
Shit, is that the way?
Yeah, we're not too far away from out in design to design Western. Well, it'll kind of come into play with the, the new bridge.
Yeah, and we gave all the information we had from before to them with love, with County and everybody else, so.
Sure.
There's a lot of, between the County and the state and us, there's a lot of numbers out there, so.
Someone called me this week and wanted to know who owns Western, and I said, well, what, I gave them my interpretation. Hopefully I'm right. If I asked you that question, who owns, who's responsible for Western?
So from.
Half and half.
So where, where the hap, where, turns out to be, if the city owns land on both sides, that is their part, that's yours.
Yeah.
If the County owns on one side, it's still the County's.
Okay.
So if you go out here, basically we start up, uh, meth. So from meth to the interstate is ours. And from meth all the way back is theirs in particular, so everything's in north from meth. So the Grand Road by our shop there, everything north is County's, everything south to the interstate is ours.
Okay, that's a good point, good question.
And the County was trying about two years ago or three years ago to give us all those roads to all the towns. And we got together minutes with the street guys did, and we made sure we kept an eye on it to not allow that to happen, so.
Since you bring that up, that would put some cattle in city property and city limits.
Yes.
So we're fussing about chickens, but we've actually got cattle in city.
Yes, we do.
Nice.
Well, Tullip Creek used to be pasture for cattle, and that was all city limits.
I would buy cattle, too.
All right, let's see, anything else for Craig? Okay, Karen's report?
Yeah, I have nothing to add unless someone has questions for me.
You know, the day you, you have something to add, I'll be surprised.
Yeah, it's pretty standard.
Yeah.
My stuff.
I just have one thing, Karen, you should probably give one for Teresa, that I think she probably needs something February twelfth. A meeting with nothing on the agenda at the bar in Hubble.
Yeah, July twelve.
July twelve.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so there's not words out there.
Right.
Yeah, you'll get mad if you can't.
Yeah, is that right, counselor? Did I get that right? If we have a forum in the Hubble bar, that might be a problem?
Yeah, that might be a problem.
That might be a problem.
I'll make sure she knows and get something posted.
But if we have it posted with nothing on the agenda, we're golden, right? Name of the project, cover, chrome?
No, you are, you are.
Okay, fair enough.
Do we get paid for that, then?
Well, you'll probably find a way, I don't think we.
So I'm glad I'd be into it, so, the meeting.
For a pizza.
All right, that's good. All right, and then we got Teresa's report. Any comments on Teresa's report that's submitted? All right, we're gonna move on to old business. Nate is up. It's the Discussing Community Education Program. You had some things in here for us, allowing you to submit a program proposal at our next council meeting.
Um, yeah, basically, um, we were, we met with, um, Brad and, uh, got some, tried to get some more information out of school. Um, as far as the financials go, and it wasn't very successful, um, they had looked into it, basically said that is what it must be, even though it seems to be a little bit sketchy as far as, you know, going from making to losing money fairly quickly. Um, so we're kind of trying to reframe it. Um, I think these are, these programs are too valuable in the community to possibly lose. If the school's trying to wash their hands of this, and I think it's an opportunity, um, for us, um, to take them on. As they kind of, in my opinion, they do fall under, um, for the most part recreational programs, which we'd be, um, possibly looking to do in the future anyways. Um, with the exception of possibly, you know, piano, but, I mean, to me, that's one of the ones I'm not worried about. Um, basically, you're paying fifteen dollars, uh, you're paying instructor fifteen dollars and they're giving, it's thirty dollars, um, an hour for the students. So it's pretty much possible to lose money on that one, so I would recommend keeping that in there. Um, as far as, um, so kind of what we're looking to do here, um, is get together and kind of put our own budget together. Um, we do have the creative freedom, basically, from the school to do with it what we want, to do with the programs what we want. Um, and we're, we wanna take advantage of that, advantage of that and reframe it and kind of, uh, put a budget together from our perspective as we're gonna be running it as opposed to the school. Um, so we will meet, uh, kind of between myself, Teresa, um, and try to get a little more input from the school as far as, you know, just the details, day in, day out stuff. Um, and we hope to provide you at the next meeting, um, kind of a more detailed description of each class. I know people had questions about individual classes, um, uh, put together an approximate budget and a kind of like tentative schedule, you know, start and end dates approximately, um, and what each program looks like as far as running. Um, one thing that I wanted to note is it would include, um, we'd also want to reach out to instructors and make sure if the city were to take it over, that they would still be, um, interested in working with us. I think that's fairly crucial. Um, so, and we, that had kind of been, um, at least a no-no, at least from Teresa's perspective in the past, as it's not, as it wasn't a guarantee that we're taking it over, which it still may not be. Um, but to, you know, reach out and say, here's what we're thinking of doing. It's not a guarantee that we're taking this over, um, but would you be interested in still working with us? Just that, so that way we know we have, you know, we just can counter, make sure we have our ducks in a row, um, at the best we can, uh, before considering taking that on, and, um, that's kind of where I'm coming from there. Um, if anybody has any specific questions, I kind of, I thought I gave a fairly detailed idea of what we'd be looking to do, um, what we already kind of started doing, um, and then just kind of some, um, points made in the closing and the beginning there, so.
I have a question. I know there's been a lot of this thing about, about the financial part of it. I just, I just wanna get my mind around a little bit because, do you remember how much are you talking about as far as roughly total, total expenses and total income?
Um, I think we were, give me one second here. I have it, and I unfortunately I didn't bring it. Um, I should have. It's probably sitting on my desk. Um, we were a few thousand dollars apart, um, is what I remember to the best of my ability there.
To me, I think a lot of attention has been brought to that part of it, and to be honest, I don't know that it's, that matters, you know? I, not that, not that financial responsibility doesn't matter, but when it comes to a community ed program, I think that, uh, the percentage of income versus expenses on this can be balanced out. I just don't know that, we don't analyze the pool every year and try to decide, okay, are we making money on this pool or are we not making money on this pool? Do we analyze sports and rec? Are we making money on this or not? I, I don't know. I think it's a few thousand dollars. If we want it, we're gonna take it. If we don't want it, we're not gonna take it. I mean, I don't think it's part of it. I don't think it's losing thirty thousand dollars a year. It's probably losing thirteen hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, and to me is, uh, the thing is, we have complete control, so we are able, the agreement that we have, uh, from the school is, you know, kind of a one-year reassessment kind of deal. Um, so I think you can, you can look at that either way, that we have the opportunity, um, to say this isn't working for us, um, or the opportunity to, you know, kind of reevaluate and, um, be able to move forward, um, create, you know, after kind of taking our program, taking our approach of the programs and seeing, you know, what works and what doesn't, and have the opportunity to either offer, um, different programs or modify, um, little things with each one to kind of make them work best for us. I think that's the biggest thing is, I, I don't look at it as we're taking on the school's program, but we're, we're taking over a portion in the community that's needed, um, for the children of our community, um, which is kind of what I'm looking to try to do with this recreation director position.
There are the notes that we were given. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the expenses were twenty-six thousand, three hundred eleven. Sixteen seventeen, twenty-nine, four eighty-three, and twenty seventeen eighteen was thirty-two, seven ninety-nine.
Sure.
Expenses. Revenue, uh, first year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, thirty-one, three thirty-one. Uh, next year, twenty-nine, seven sixty-five, so up a little bit in twenty fifteen, about break even in twenty sixteen, and then twenty-six thousand in twenty seventeen eighteen, which was about the five thousand dollar loss. Right.
Sure.
I knew, I knew we had it. It was, I just had to.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize. I just didn't want to look through this while I was trying to discuss.
In a nutshell, I'm just, what you're asking is, is can you spend time and energy over the next two weeks on Brad and Sarah and Teresa to put proposal together for the council for the next meeting?
Yeah, basically is, what I'm trying to do is get you as many details as possible, um, by the time, of course, it's the week of the fourth. We might not be able to do quite as much this week as we'd like, um, but next week to hopefully, um, do our best we can to kind of iron things out. Look at what we would hope to approximate our spending and budget, approximate budget for the year. Um, and, uh, yeah, just get you all the details we can, um, especially, I think the most important thing is, is reaching out to those, um, instructors and making sure that we have them on board if we are to take it on, cause I think, you know, if we take it on and we don't have anybody, it's gonna be pretty tough to wrangle some new instructors, completely, like a whole set of them, um, in the next month and a half or two here, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to, permit, um, Teresa and them to pursue, let's see, put together the community ed information for the July sixteenth meeting.
Second. Nate, I'd like to see if it all, if you have time, you know, and here your description, you have brochures online. Um, you know, obviously, public awareness is probably one of the key things on this, assess this. Um, sure would be nice if you had time to maybe come up with some quick little caveats on how you might wanna improve, uh, public awareness or appeal.
Um, yeah, I can, I kind of covered that on the last time we had it brought up, but I can, I can dig those points up and give you a thought possibly, so.
Put it black and white for me.
Certainly, I'd be happy to.
Other discussion?
I always wonder why every, every, uh, organization needs a new logo right away. Throw that one down.
You should have been there when it was invented. You got it. All right. That's the whole. Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ronan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes. No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Nathan, I would encourage you, uh, to at our July sixteenth meeting, also put a timeline together of, the Parks and Rec Director side of this position.
Okay.
All right, we have no new business, but correspondence, which one of you is under correspondence? So, Councilman Johnson is moving out of the ward.
Yeah.
Yes, would you like to say it?
Um, so, yeah, I.
Could you on spot?
I. It was, it was actually kind of a very sort of quick decision for us, but it was a good opportunity and it went really fast. Um, otherwise I wouldn't have probably been like, oh, yeah, I'll do this in a year. And I know we're gonna do this, but, um, I really enjoyed this, and I appreciate you guys giving me a chance. I guess.
I was going to do the work.
They find your replacement. You knew that, right?
You know, Art already called me about that.
Yeah, of course he did.
So, but thank you guys for giving me a voice.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for your service. Thanks for coming on when you did. We know that, you know, you come into this a little bit like.
Yeah, it was more like a learning experience for me, I think.
Yep.
But I appreciate it.
There's three things everybody should experience in their life, in my opinion. Civil service, military service, and factory work.
Factory work.
Cause they'll totally shape your, your views on some things.
In that order?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, and then we also, we got the thank you to Sioux Valley Energy and East River Co-op. If I remember correctly.
They do, they do a lot of donating for, or help us out, like lights at the ball fields there. They bring their hundred-foot truck out and they'll, if we got stuff for when you're electrician, they'll actually bring them up in there and change the stuff out. But this time around, we just changed bulbs and marked down which sockets and everything, so they come out and do that completely free, just to help out communities. Um, in Sioux Valley, um, they went out and they dug the holes for us for the scoreboards and we're never gonna need recognition for it. So just think of something that the guys said, so it would be nice to at least have a thank you somewhere for.
You writing it?
I certainly can. They won't read it, they'll write it.
I'll piggyback on that. Sioux Falls Electric provided the equipment, uh, that they have plowin', uh, PVC for those scoreboards.
Oh, kidding.
About a hundred and eighty thousand dollar machine there, plowin' that in, you know, forty thousand dollar mini excavator. And a couple of trucks to haul out here, you know, donate it as a point, it's time to logistically get things out here, so.
I don't think they'll get a thank you anywhere else that we could shoot.
All right, so, so we all miss it. Craig, you're writing it?
Yep.
Okay, will that include Sioux Falls Electric?
Yep.
Okay. And we'll sign next meeting, or are you writing it right now?
I'm jacked up, so.
We excited next meeting, then.
All right, so I'm good. I think we should, um, we should go into executive session for Cleveland personnel.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second. All right, can we get a second? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On the second, all in favor?
All right.
Any votes?